Welcome to the Town of Acton Planning Board Meeting, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will appoint Roger, who's our alternate, tonight. And Gavin, if you'd like, PP table.
Come here.
Oh, alright.
Welcome.
Welcome. Oh, thank you.
Good evening.
Jump on in.
There's no minutes, so there will be no approval of minutes till tonight.
Okay.
Just wanna ask, Dan Krampitz has asked that everybody here have their email, town email work them correctly now?
Yes.
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 Gavin?
I've never had email, and I don't blame you. Okay.
Alright.
Alright, just get a couple papers out here, and then commence with the festivities. Alright, well, it looks like only one thing on the agenda tonight, Fairgrounds ride, so... Uh, if you'd like to come up to the podium, we can begin with that.
Hello, Kendra Maris, Civil Engineer with SAVGO, here on behalf of the applicant. Um, just to start, I'm, I'll be fighting for my life up here, I have the cold that everyone is caught, so... Try to breathe and speak clearly, but my apologies in advance. You might wanna sanitize this after I leave. So, to start, uh, last time we were here, um, we deemed the application, the site plan review application that we submitted, complete. Thank you, David. And, um, since then, we've submitted, uh, a response to comments received by Ben Smith, which were regarding mostly completeness, but also, um, compliance with the standards of site plan review. So, I thought tonight, we could go through, uh, the memo that we submitted. Um, I can answer any questions, additional questions that you may have, um, about the plans, and then we're hoping to set a date for both the sitewalk and the public hearing. Um, I don't know, Ben, you wanna start, or you want me to go through item by item?
Uh, the memo that I had prepared and submitted, uh, for the last planning board meeting, I have not updated. Uh, I haven't prepared any new materials for tonight's meeting. I think the summary of reviewing the application for completeness was, was good. Uh, and in my mind, uh, I, I concur, um, you know, there are some waivers on this, um, application that need to be considered. A public hearing needs to be scheduled, and to the extent we can get through, uh, the performance standards, or at least the highlighted ones, where the applicant has made some responses, and I, I know folks have got that in front of them, so, uh, happy to turn it back to the applicant to kind of go through that, if, if that's, I'd like to proceed.
Sure, we, and to clarify, there are bullet points that look unanswered. We, um, those were more statements, um, from Ben. Anything that we did respond to, required a response was, um, is in bold, uh, in this memo, so... I guess I can just start where, um, with our first response. So, access into the site. It was noted that we showed, uh, car queuing for the drive-through, um, from the internal intersection to the, uh, the order board, uh, which is true, there are twelve spaces there, and that is the requirement for, uh, car queuing per DOT standards. Uh, we were asked to just clarify, um, how many cars can queue up from the internal intersection back to one oh nine? Um, and the answer to that is, we can fit five cars, uh, between one oh nine and that first painted stop bar. We feel that this is, to be clear, there's no requirement for car queuing there from DOT. They, they don't really care about that area, they cared more about the drive-through. Um, but, we, we feel that five cars is an adequate amount for stacking at that little internal intersection. It's a three-way stop, or would be once there's a development on the other side. You know, a car's gonna come to a stop, they're gonna make a decision about which way they're turning, shouldn't take very long. We'll allow five cars to, to pile up if needed, and we don't anticipate them backing up into one oh nine.
How about on Milton Mills?
Uh, we weren't addressed, we weren't asked to address queuing there. There's no stop sign once you enter the site there, um, so really, no, no queuing will occur. People will just take the right-hand turn and continue on through the site.
In terms of entering the site, in terms of...
In terms of entering, yeah.
How about exiting the site? How much room are you gonna have there for people exiting the site?
There's quite a bit of room there, I don't know how many cars, but you've probably got a space for at least, it depends on where they're coming from. Like, if they're coming from the drive-through, you could probably fit ten to twelve cars between the end of that drive-through and Milton Mills' stop sign.
Right, 'cause some might be coming around like this.
Exactly, yeah. But there's a, quite a bit of pavement there, for people leaving the pumps and going that way. Um, I would say, ten cars to the drive-through and probably twelve cars back to the pumps, so, really should be adequate space, yeah. Uh, we were asked to show site distance at both entrances, um, as well as the distance from the proposed entrance on one oh nine to Milton Mills Road. As I mentioned last time, I'm sure there will be other comments from the site plan walk, and other comments, once Ben has been able to address these, so we'll submit revised plans. Uh, we're happy to show the site distance at each entrance. Uh, and just to clarify, it is noted within the application in the traffic, um, memo, the site distance at each, at each entrance. Uh, moving on to parking layout and design. It was noted that the, uh, applicant should consider curb stops or fencing along the uncurb parking area furthest from the building. So, that's the, uh, it's an employee parking area that we had added, furthest, furthest from the building, as noted. We have forty-one parking spaces, so the required... Sorry, I'm, I'm addressing the wrong, the wrong thing, that's next. As far as curb stops go, curb stops are, um, not the greatest solution when it comes to plowing, and they get pretty beat up, so, we've actually opted to add curbing, um, because there is a pedestrian path there, um, adjacent to the parking. We figured adding curbing as separation, you know, to either stop a car, and also provide separation between the parking space and the, the walking path. Um, curbing seemed to be the best solution there. Uh, so I believe we've addressed, uh, that. Comment? And, um, stated, yeah, the next one down, pedestrian circulation.
So, in terms, just, we'll stick with parking layout and design for a minute, if you want. So, you're gonna reduce down to thirty-nine parking spaces?
That's correct, yeah.
To help with the islands?
Yeah, to just...
You're taking out these couple ones, right? You're suggesting we can take out...
Yep, those two on the end. So, that would leave us with three landscaped islands required, which is what we've already proposed.
And I was wondering if, I was looking at the design for the septic, it looks like the septic, uh, uh, tanks would be on the right-hand side of the large snow storage island, so to speak. I was wondering if we could get some, uh, you know, non-woody perennials on the left-hand side, so that's like, would be one of the islands.
Yep, uh, yeah, we can get...
Low-rooted things, like flower, dandelies, or something.
Yeah, yeah, something with a shallow root system, um, that won't affect the...
You know, beautify it a little bit.
Yep, yeah, on the left side, I think that would be possible.
'Cause it looked like the tanks were really only taking up about, I don't know, if we could pull up the, what is it, under the, um, I don't know.
Yeah, it's like, two-thirds of that landscaped island on the right-hand side, planned view.
Right there, yeah, so you can see, but, you know, a fair amount on the left could be used for non-woody landscaping.
Yeah, you gotta be careful with that, too, 'cause the, that's chambers, those are leaching fields, any roots will affect that.
Yeah, well, you're gonna grasp it, right?
You only need four to six inches. So, do whatever root system you're putting there, goes inside your chambers, goes inside the piping.
But it couldn't be grasped, correct?
Correct, but it...
Yeah. Cool, okay.
Well, uh, so, sorry to clarify, are we asking for a grass landscaped area, or a planted, planted with shrubs?
No, not non-woody vegetation, so I was thinking like, you know, daffodils, or some sort of low-rooted flowers that would beautify the area, that would just grow in with the grass, that you could mow them still during part of the season.
Yeah, we can, we can look at what...
Which is kind of my vision.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with our landscape architect to, to, um, come up with something that could be planted in between those two sewer lines that you see there on the left-hand side.
Just 'cause we really only have two islands. So, the one that looks like a phone, and the, the larger one, and then you've kind of got the little pan handle on, on the left, and there's, the, this one over here is more like a foundation, it's definitely not an island, it's in the corner of the parking lot, so...
Yeah, we think it's...
I thought that would, that would satisfy the requirement if we just got some sort of, you know, low-growing plants in there, other than just grass.
Yeah, as far as landings go, we really focused on kind of dressing up that patio area to the left of the building, and those islands there on the left, um, you know, close to the drive-through, um, and leaving the other areas grass. As well as plantings along the, um, Route one oh nine and Milton Mills, with a pretty hefty buffer being put in, uh, there as well. So, we also agreed to pave a portion of the, uh, pathway, sorry, my voice is, is there a water pump?
Yeah. Something, you can keep on doing, I'll grab it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, sorry, guys. So, the, uh, portion of the pedestrian path that's adjacent to those parking spaces that we were just talking about at the top of the plan, um, will be paved, as suggested. Alright. Uh, we're also...
I was wondering, in terms of that path, uh, would there be any sort of signage at the intersection of one oh nine and Milton Mills Road?
I'm sorry, say that again.
I was just wondering about potential signage at the intersection of one oh nine and Milton Mills Road, where the path comes out, something saying like, you know, pedestrian entrance, or, you know...
Uh, yes.
'Cause people are probably gonna be walking from the fairgrounds, or from Iron Tales, right across the intersection, where I'm mostly concerned with people coming down one oh nine from the south, taking a left-hand turn, where it's kind of, they're just kind of shooting in, and it's a little bit hard to see.
I believe DOT was, was addressing that, too.
Yeah.
We had DOT scoping meeting, and they're, they're concerned about that as well, so they're, they're addressing it.
Uh, yeah, we're, we'll probably be asked to, um, put in a sign at one oh nine that says, like, trail crossing. Possibly on both sides of one oh nine at the, at that entrance.
And then maybe some sort of sign that directs people to use that, as opposed to walking to either of the driveway entrances, just to, so that people aren't just walking in the driveways, not knowing there's a path there. I was thinking some sort of signage for that would be, also be helpful.
Yeah, uh, you mean at the entrance to the path at the Milton Mills intersection? I think that's possible, yeah.
And you're saying now that that path's gonna be paved?
Not all of it. Just the portion, struggling, just the portion, um, that's adjacent to the parking, where it will also be curved.
Ju, oh, just right there.
Can I get this in here?
Um, the path, yeah.
Uh, right by the snow storage?
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, I, I think, if, if I could jump in, maybe give you a voice break.
Sure, thank you.
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, you know, provide, put words in your mouth, for example, but, um, I think that comment I had about paving was related to curb stops or fencing, just trying to recognize that without any great separation between the parking and the trail, with a snow storage directly behind it, it could have led to, um, either scraping all the stone surface into the snow storage, or the snow storage would, would block the sidewalk. So, I think that the, the curving, as well as the paving for at least that section, addresses that concern. They were related, and, um, you know, I, I think there's still, more to come, probably, when it comes to DOT and the requirements that are gonna be happening, uh, within the right-of-way, related to this trail, also related to the entrance on, um, on, on the main road, the main entrance we talked about last time. There is no standard, kind of getting back to that one, for the internal queuing or, or stacking distance, but, um, I appreciate your explanation, I think the board's gonna need to make a determination of, of whether that is adequate. I, I, I don't know DOT would weigh in on that, but, um, I know that all of the internal, uh, turn radius and circulation is designed for, for trailer truck-sized vehicle, and we talked about trailers and then trucks towing a snowmobile or something like that, so, um, that five-vehicle capacity might be a truck and a car, or a couple trailers, or something like that. I think, I don't know if you wanna speculate, uh, maybe you don't at this point, about, uh, potential turning lanes, or, um, what it would look like for a deceleration lane, or if, if you had cars like, coming back out on one oh nine, that's certainly something I don't think a turning lane is designed for.
No.
Right.
Uh, coming back out onto one oh nine, you're just gonna have a right-hand turn into the lane that's there. What we are fairly certain of is that, fairly certain, please note, things can change, is that a left-turn lane onto Milton Mills Road from one oh nine, so basically in front of Iron Tales, and I don't know how long it will be, is likely to be warranted. So, that at least is most likely coming. The question is, will they require that turning lane to extend from there all the way up, to make a left-hand turn from one oh nine into the one oh nine entrance of the site? Or, will it, will you have to turn left onto Milton Mills, then the road will stay narrow, and will they make us add another separate turn lane to take a left-hand turn into the site from one oh nine? Those are all possibilities. Another thing about the pedestrian path that we don't know, and we weren't given, honestly, a lot of direction, what we proposed is this, what you're seeing, there is a possibility of them requiring, instead of that internal path, a sidewalk, um, along Route one oh nine. It's, the speed there is high, um, it doesn't make a lot of sense, we can't put a crosswalk across one oh nine with speeds that high. So, for us, we thought it made a lot more sense, and it, and it requires a lot less work in the right-of-way to do an internal path.
I think that makes more sense, uh, the internal path, too.
Yep, but I agree with, with, you know, your thoughts on signage, because people don't know it's there, they're not gonna use it, so...
Especially at first, once you get used to it.
Yeah, yep, I agree. So, we can easily mark the sign at both trailheads. Uh, I think we'll be required to mark it at least at the one oh nine entrance.
And I was just asking about the, the extent of the paving, 'cause I just wanted to make sure it was reflected on the impervious surface calculation of the whole site.
Yeah, whether it's pavement or gravel, it's considered impervious, so...
Oh, it's already, the whole path is already part of it?
Yep.
Alright.
Uh, next to, the next one is groundwater protection. Um, the applicant must demonstrate that the proposed septic system meets state can, state standards for safe drinking water at the property line. And there was also the bullet above it, uh, asked about the monitoring wells that are on-site. Who will be, uh, like, what's the purpose of them, who will be responsible for sampling and monitoring water from these wells? The wells were installed for, um, analysis only, not for monitoring into the future. And so, uh, they won't continue to be monitored, those wells themselves, they'll be protected in place, just in case, um, 'cause they're good indicators of what's going on with the groundwater. Uh, but, one thing that may be required is a, uh, monitoring well close to the new public drinking water well, which is off the, uh, left front corner of the proposed building. That's where the new well is going, next to the drive-through. Uh, we may have to install a monitoring well there. Iron Tales has a monitoring well right next to their, uh, public drinking water well. Uh, but the state, the state will, uh, require that or not require it. And as far as, uh, groundwater protection at the property line, um, if you look at the utility plan, where our septic fields are shown in the next plan. The three hundred foot offset from those septic fields, um, doesn't hit our property line on the Milton Mills side, which is the direction that most of the groundwater is flowing from the site. So, I'd say at the property line, since no, um, nutrients are expected to move beyond that three hundred foot circle, then we would be fine at the property line. Ben, you have any questions or thoughts on that one?
Only, only that, um, I usually see that demonstrated in, in the form of like a nitrate plume or something, in, in lieu of buffers, and I don't know if, I'm, I'm suspecting that with the monitoring wells, the modeling that was done for this, that, that, that analysis may have been done, um, and if it had, that would be useful to, to see as part of the application.
Um, nitrate plumes in general, no, um, the direction of groundwater flow, and just maintaining the setbacks that are required by the state laws. Um, I'm kind of inferring that by that, that three hundred foot setback not crossing a property line, that, um, we, we should be all set there, um, because that's what's required by the state, is to just meet the setbacks. Um, and the reason we didn't do a nitrate study in particular for this, because, was because I didn't see a requirement for it, uh, as part of site plan review, if it was subdivision, I believe a nitrate study would be required with the hydrogeological report. Uh, okay, moving on to fire protection. So, we have looked into the requirements of, uh, NFPA one-one-four-two, per, uh, and not NFPA thirteen, which is also mentioned. Per International Building Code, we're not required to sprinkler this building, um, which would then trigger, uh, NFPA one-one-four-two for water supply in rural suburban areas. I called the fire department and spoke to them about, I think somebody, uh, mentioned the last time we were here, that there's a fire pond close to Iron Tales, uh, maybe I heard that incorrectly, but when I was talking with the fire department, Lewin Pond does have a dry hydrant off of Milton Mills, and, um, there's a cove off of Melsom that is accessed by Thirteenth Street, um, and that also has a dry hydrant. So, in the very close vicinity of this site, there are two places where a pumper fire truck, um, could pull up, fill up the truck, and then get to the site for firefighting purposes. The chief, uh, said that we would have to check with the state fire marshal if that was an appropriate means of fire protection for the site that they felt met NFPA one-one-four-two. Um, so, we will try to facilitate that conversation and get an answer for you on that. But, at this point, um, providing, you know, thirty thousand gallons plus of water for firefighting purposes on this site, um, is gonna be really difficult, and the reason for that is we have a lot of ledge. A thirty thousand gallon system is massive, and they're deep, and we would have to be blasting out a significant amount of ledge to make that happen. Um, not to mention all the setbacks for septic and wells, and the, um, the fuel storage tanks that are underground. It would prove to be a challenge. So, we're hoping that with those water supplies in close proximity, we meet the code.
What was the square footage on this building?
Six, uh, six hundred square feet.
You might wanna just check with the fire marshal's office, 'cause I knew they had some new codes come in, um, last year. On a square footage on some, I can't remember the actual size.
Okay. Yep, you can verify that.
I haven't the way to do it, too, just...
I'll wait for your, your, uh, your report, thank you. Uh, getting ahead of myself here. Uh, we talked about three hundred foot setback, and, yeah, fire protection. So, we're on to good neighbor standards, um, and this last one just discusses the reduction in parking, just requiring, um, three landscaped islands now. Once we take those two out, we'll meet that requirement. I'm, again, happy to answer any questions, I think it would be really beneficial to us at this point if we could just further discuss waivers, as Ben mentioned. But I know, I think you, you said last time you'd like to see the site first, um...
I do have a little list of questions I'd like to go over, um... One is, did we get a project narrative for this? I couldn't find anywhere where it stated kind of just an overview of the project, and something that include the hours of operation. I couldn't find the hours of operation anywhere.
Um, we submitted a cover letter, which has like a general, um, general explanation of the project, um, hours of operation weren't in there, um...
Yeah, so we'll have to get that, that's one of the, like, basic things we need to find.
It'll probably, like, generally, it'll be five a.m. to nine p.m., the weekend to be six or seven. Probably six on Saturday in the morning, seven on Sunday, until eight or nine also.
Is that for the store?
Yep.
So, then the fuel will be twenty-four hour?
Yep.
And then what are the hours at the Dunkin'?
It's gonna be same as the store.
Six a.m. to seven p.m.?
Same, same as the store, yeah.
So, what, what he said, what, just in case you didn't hear, uh, weekdays, five to nine, five a.m. to nine p.m. Uh, Sun, Saturdays, six a.m. to nine p.m., and Sundays, seven a.m. to nine p.m.
And Dunkin' hasn't talked to me yet about if they want to open earlier than that or not.
Yeah.
But, um, as of right now, that's what we're going with for hours.
Yeah, we gotta get something to find for that.
Yeah, they're not easy to hoot with.
Yeah, and then, um, do you feel like the illuminated Dunkin' sign would be turned off during the off-hours?
Probably make it so we can.
Yeah, I was just hoping to get an idea for which exterior lighting would be turned off when you weren't in operation.
Yep.
And then the lighting around the building, is that all, uh, motion-activated, or...
I don't know, can't really get into that with the lights.
Um, no, but we could probably put timers on the lighting, so that just some lighting stays on for security purposes.
Yeah.
The lighting closest to the building.
Yeah, I think it would make sense to, I mean, obviously, you're gonna have the fuel island is probably gonna be lit up...
Yeah.
Throughout, um, but if the, you know, if we can kind of get a, a sense of which lights and, get written down, which lights are gonna be turned off when you're not operating, that would be great. Um, I had an easy one here, um, under solid waste disposal, are there gonna be trash cans available on the site?
Uh, there's a dumpster shown, um, right at the end of the drive-through lane, uh, so, kinda back right corner of the store. Um, and it's enclosed with a fence. Again, rear, rear of the site, as far away from the roads as you can get it, pretty much.
How about, you know, trash cans for people going through the drive thru? I'm trying, or just who are using the store and trying to think how we can reduce the number of Dunkin cups on Milton Mills Road and throughout the town. You know, if we had just had some, maybe we can get those on the plan, maybe one by the entrance to the store or maybe one by the fueling station.
There'll be each, every between each at the fueling station.
Yeah.
That's what I have to have in there.
So there'll be one at the location of each fuel pump. And then I think one, I know I appreciate when I go through the drive thru to have one of the long neck trash cans. That you can, you know, throw garbage into at the end of the drive thru, I think that would be appropriate there.
Yeah, I think you get those on the plan, that would be great. Ben, I did want to talk about the lot coverage calculations, which was sheet C101.
Jason, please just roll the sheet 101.
I think it was.
Site plan, I think.
One up?
Yep. Yep, and. What are, what are you referring to Gavin?
I was in, I think it was in the detailed notes like the, I wish I had room to spread this thing out.
Oh, the general standard.
Yeah, that, that's why.
That's the second sheet in the set.
It was like a small little, yeah.
Yeah, there. Where you see the table on the left-hand side, number 11. Maximum lot coverage, 30% or 50% with 100 foot side and rear setbacks.
Okay, so right here, and I think what you have is 33% indicated?
Yep.
Okay, so I wanted to just look at the 100 foot side and rear setbacks on the, must be just on the general plan.
Site plan, yep, two down.
And then the 25 foot buffers, vegetated buffers.
Next one down. Yep, so we have 100, 100 foot setbacks.
I think the next one showed it a little bit better. It actually had it depicted on the ones that, yeah, this one I think.
Yep.
Okay, so it looks like you're good on the, if you go down just a little bit more adjacent. It looks like you're good on your 100 foot on the rear. And you, and your 25 foot vegetated buffer looks good. Looks like you don't have a 100 foot setback on the left.
Oh, we do, what you're seeing that's closer than 100 feet.
I'm talking about on the, my left, yeah.
Yeah, what you're seeing, that first line that you're seeing on the, on the right side of the drive thru lane is an easement line. That is an easement for shared access of the internal intersection entrance drive. Just beyond, to the right of that line is your 100 foot building setback, which we are meeting.
So, and we're, we're just saying that the setback is only for the building?
That's correct.
We're not talking about any of the other paved areas or anything?
No.
All right, so, and then just looking at your 25 foot buffers on the left and right sides. Specifically on the Milton Mills Road site, I don't see a 25 foot vegetated buffer indicated on the plan.
So that's why we added plantings on the landscape plan that lines Milton Mills Road. To create a 25 foot buffer where we had to grade.
Right, you wanna go down to the landscape plan, it looks like they planted four trees. But I'd like to see like, just like the typical line that shows the 25 feet. Cause I wouldn't say that those specific, well, six trees are gonna be considered a buffer for the whole, whole Milton Mills Road.
I believe, so we added trees for screening. I believe vegetated buffer also can consist of grass area within that 25 feet.
Well, it has to be a visual buffer, so I'd like to see like, you know, the 25 feet, at least a line showing where that would be. Kind of like you've got on the 109 side. And then some, you know, indication of where the planting is gonna be to fill in the gaps that are existing there now.
So you'd like the 25 foot buffer requirement shown on the plans?
Yes, and, and what you're gonna do for plantings to fulfill that.
So you.
Or, or just enough, or you could just have a note that says we're not gonna mow this 25 feet and let it grow up naturally.
So I understand.
Create the buffer.
I understand what you're saying about the plantings closer to the entrance where they're spread out. But we have a ditch there that conveys water, it did in the existing condition. So it has to in the proposed condition in order to convey water underneath the mil- our Milton Mills entrance and continue it down along the road. So we don't want to put plantings within the ditch. We also have pipes. If you look at the utility plan, there are pipes underground that prevent us from being able to add planting specifically in those little gaps that you're seeing in the landscaping. You can see the culverts with riprap aprons right in that area. That's why there isn't a, you know, a hedge wall of, of shrubbery there proposed. And your ordinance doesn't have specifics on the density in which a buffer needs to be planted. Or that it needs to be planted at all, so we've, we've, as a compromise, we've kind of offered what, what we can without altering our, the drainage as proposed in our stormwater treatment.
Okay, well, it doesn't say the vegetated buffer has to be right against the road. So you could have it in a little ways. And I'd just like to see the 25 foot vegetated buffer indicated on the plan. And then we can see, you know, how it turns out with the plantings and the, and the stormwater management.
We can certainly add the, the buffer requirement.
Yep. Oh, and then I had the. Sheet G002, landscape notes.
That's that sheet?
Yeah, number five.
Oh, sorry, the second sheet in the set.
Oh, the second sheet?
I'm sorry, I saw, I heard.
I see what you're saying.
I heard G and I thought grading, but G is for general.
Yeah, right there, landscape notes. Number five, the plant material guarantee.
Yep.
Right there, plant materials should be guaranteed. Okay, and then I just wanted to point out page 78 in the ordinance, just, it's a number, it's 5.2.0.6. Number six, and a survival rate of at least 80% of planted trees is safe and secure for a minimum of five year period. So if we could get that in there.
Is that in the shoreline zone?
No, it's just in revegetation.
What revegetation of what?
Just general revegetation. Well, everybody should have their board and coat when they're going through these. You looking at mine? Do you wanna see it?
Did you say it was Gavin, five what?
That's a long time to guarantee plant matter.
Let's just look at the ordinance for, I mean, if you're gonna plant a tree, we just, five years from now, we don't want all the trees to be dead and we have the buffer, you know, you mean, so.
I just wanna make sure that it's in a.
It's in the revegetation section. It's 5.2.6D, number six.
When revegetation is required, it's supposed to violations.
No, that's, it's just general revegetation.
Let's not. Well, but I, I wouldn't say that they're running a commercial business, I don't think they wanna have dead plant matter. I'm just, that's my own personal opinion.
If you read what they have, it's for the first two years. And I'm asking for a guarantee for five years, 80% of the plant material, which is what the ordinance calls for.
I can verify if that's an applicable section of the, of the ordinance.
It's, it's, I mean, asking the plant matter lives for five years is not an unreasonable thing, okay. So I'd like to see that.
Could, I'm sorry, could you just, 5.2 point?
5.2.0.6D, number six.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I'm looking at.
I'm just going through my list of notes that I have here. I'll just get into the stormwater management section of the ordinance, 6.6.4.7.8. I mean, if anybody else has anything, please.
Well, no, I wanna, you have a list, so it's addressed it, as long as it's.
And then I think that was the, um, image map is, you could pull up the. The, the map that has the stormwater details on it.
The grading plan.
Which one is that?
Keep going down.
Best one.
Yeah, right there. And I think the one above it shows some of the details as well. Yeah, that one shows the aquifer protection district, the line a little bit better. And I'd like to see anything we can do to move those, any of the stormwater major features back out of the aquifer protection district, which is great.
So that line is our overlay on our GIS, it is not where the aquifer, that's just an overlay. They're shown, they've shown with studies that their aquifer is not actually on that map.
Right, well, it's not called where the aquifer is, it's called the aquifer protection district. It's a district we have in our town. So I think it would make sense that we didn't have those infiltration basins in, you know, it wouldn't be that much to move them back out of the aquifer protection district.
Stormwater treatment measures aren't prohibited within the aquifer protection district.
I've got three sections here, let's see. Right on the page that I just, right under stormwater management, there's G. So G, the, this one here, the biological and chemical properties of the receiving water must not be degraded by stormwater runoff in the development site. Use of oil grease traps and man bowls, the use of onsite vegetated waterways, vegetated buffer strips along waterways and drainage trails. And the reduction in use of deicing salts and phthalates may be required, especially where the development stormwater discharges into the gravel aquifer area and other water supplier grid pond. So I was just thinking, it would be easier to move those things back.
So if, so those things are treating the stormwater runoff? So the water coming through, infiltrating through those and coming out of the outlet pipe is treated and clean? So what they're referring to is discharges of stormwater that are untreated being discharged into the aquifer protection zone.
Okay, also 6.6.4.7.1. Utilization of the site, which was right at the beginning of the approved standards in interior. Can you read the whole thing if you want? Play for the developments, but must reflect the natural capacity of the site to support development. Buildings, lots and support facilities must be collusted in the portions of the site that are most suitable conditions for the development. Environmentally sensitive areas, including but not limited to wetlands, steep slopes, floodplains, significant wildlife habitats, fisheries, scenic areas. Habitat for rare and endangered plant animals, unique natural communities and natural areas and sanded gravel aquifers must be maintained and preserved to the maximum extent. So that's the second one. District requirements. District requirements. Page 46. Change of use of structure of land in the aquifer protection district. Just says that, I can read it.
Did you say change of use?
Yep, change of use of a structure or land. Use of a structure may not be changed from another unless the code enforcement officer after reviewing the written application determines that the new one will have no greater adverse impact on the sand and gravel aquifer than the existing one.
So, sorry, just to pause, so change of use from existing to proposed, but there's no existing use on the site, the site is.
There is, Bob's ugly bagels is the existing use, is a conditional use permit for Bob's ugly bagels.
It was a conditional use.
Yes.
They were a conditional use?
Yes.
Okay.
They just did it last year. So, and simply I'm just asking that we pull back these, some of these maintenance structures out of the aquifer protection district.
The develop, the development itself as far as all impervious and structures are outside of the district boundary. It's only the underdrained soil filters that are slightly within it. And as I mentioned, they treat the stormwater coming from the, the development. So as far as discharge requirements, I, I don't think that we're necessarily not needing the standards of stormwater discharge in the aquifer protection zone. But I, I might have, Ben, I know this is coming up now, you might need some time to prepare a response, but I don't know if you have anything to add?
He's just asking, that's all.
Yep, yeah.
I'm just going through what I've, what I've seen and I'd like to do whatever I can to protect the aquifer protection district. And I don't think it would be much to move those things back slightly so they're not in there.
It would actually take quite a bit of effort. They are designed in accordance with DEP as well as town regulations. And space wise, they are, we couldn't move them any closer to the development itself. Because if you look at the grading plan, which is the next sheet. You can see all of those proposed contours that you're not seeing on the site plan. That is why they are spaced the way that they are from the edge of the pavement. Because we require a sediment for bay, which is between the edge of pavement and the basin itself. Grading, a berm, several things that make sure that water is flowing the way it needs to flow over the pavement in order to get to the for bay before it actually drains to the basin itself. So to move, and as you can see, if you look at the plan, to the right of the basin that's on the lower side of the sheet. We are very, very close to the property line there with our grading. So to shift those in any way, we create, you know, we, we're repeating on the development if they go to the left. We can't go to the right because that's further into the zone that you're talking about. And, and I think truly it's a moot point because basins aren't prohibited in the zone.
Well, I'm putting it out there and we'll see, we'll see what you do and we can, we'll revisit it and once we get the new plans and see where we're at. I think that's most of what I had. If there's anything else anybody else wants to discuss on the project, that's what I've come up with so far. And I am still obviously curious about noise, like the noise of the drive thru with, you know, approximately to the rural district, but.
We actually were able to meet with the closest of butters, plan, the bottom of the plan. And we went over all the plans with them, they had, they had a lot of, you know, concerns, just general questions, I would say. And I'll let them speak for themselves at the public hearing, but I think that we, you know, after going through the plans in detail and explaining some of these things. I think that they left that meeting feeling a lot more comfortable with the project. One thing we talked about in relation to noise is the proximity of the order board to the property line. It's actually 175 feet away.
175.
From the property line, yeah. And we do provide a 60 foot buffer, vegetated buffer between the order board and them. So once they learned, you know, thinking about that, how, how far away that actually. So, once they learned, you know, thinking about that, how, how far away that actually would be from the property line itself, I think they felt a lot more comfortable. And, and they didn't, they didn't want to see any changes moving forward. I think that they also intend to, you know, work with, work with the applicant, the owner, who will be the owner of this, moving forward if they have any concerns. You know, just being good neighbors and being able to reduce the volume on that if needed. It's a possibility, so I, I think that they're both in agreement that they'll have to work together to make sure that everyone's happy.
Yeah, well, I don't think we're really talking about the current residents, we're talking about proximity to the rural zone. Doesn't mean those people are going to be there for the life of the project, for one. So we're talking about the change of zone and the proximity of these features to it. One thing that would help me be more comfortable with it is if we, you know, where you have these, the notes about landscaping, if you had some notes about vegetation that included those, you know, notes about the twenty-five foot buffer, vegetated buffers on the sides. Maybe something that said about the sixty-five, sixty-foot vegetated buffer in the back there and that it would be maintained or something. Get some notes about vegetation in the plan.
I definitely think that's a possibility.
Yeah, that would, that would help, I think.
We can put a restriction on, um, any further clearing on that side of the, uh, property, it's not a problem.
I think that would help.
Yeah.
Are there other questions about the standards or the, the findings that I drafted up or the responses to the draft?
My, my biggest concern is the, is the, is the traffic impact and how it's going to affect the intersection of Milton Mills and one oh nine and also one oh nine and the traffic coming in and out of thirteenth street and the new, and, but obviously that's under DOT review, so until we see that.
Yeah, yeah. We, you know, I think we came up last time, what we are hoping is that we can condition the approval of a TMP as a condition to this approval. Because of the time that it takes to work with DOT to get these permits. And you would be privy to, anything that's approved by DOT, we'd have to provide a copy of to you if we conditioned it that way. What it comes down to is that with it being a state room and we're triggering the TMP, what DOT says is going to prevail here as far. There are town standards that we need to adhere to, of course.
Yep.
And, and I feel we have done that. But, yeah, that, that's our hope, just in the interest of time, that we do that.
One quick comment, um, you had talked about the, uh, the traffic queuing up at the drive-through and also the traffic, um, at that stop sign. You said that the, um, that the traffic for the drive-through queue met DOT standards and all that.
Right.
You don't really see how that, how DOT can, monitor that because you're having a complete whole stop area, you know, um, be, before the drive-through, if you will. So it really has nothing to do with one oh nine because you have a whole separate stopping area before the drive-through. So that, I'm a little concerned about that, um, traffic coming in off of, off of that and the queuing up on that because of that, uh, hammerhead.
Yeah. One way to alleviate it might be to actually just remove the stop sign, uh, from traffic coming in from one oh nine. Make it, make it so that they always have the right of way, they don't have to stop before they go to the drive-through, they don't have to stop before they turn left.
I just, I just, I just see potential problems there, um, you know, fourth of July weekend, you've got boats and trail, you know, boat trailers and trucks and people lined up to get in and out of there, you know, um, I can, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I, I understand the concern. I, I mean, I think, I think that might be a good solution. It's a little, um, where we have a crosswalk there, you probably want a stop sign. But, you know, you can have a crosswalk without a stop sign, it's an internal intersection, it's not like people are moving very quickly if they're taking a left turn, so. I, I think that's an option, if it seems reasonable to you. And just to clarify, DOT doesn't, because it's internal to the site, that's why, they don't actually have a standard on it. The only standard they can hold us to is the twelve queuing cars for the drive-through use. So that's why they, they haven't provided comment on, on the internals, the distance from the internal stop to one oh nine. That's kind of up to us to determine whether or not it's adequate or not.
Just to piggyback off Adam, actually, he, uh, jumped in there with some, some similar concerns. So going through, uh, the plan, it looks like that you're averaging about, or you're, you're thinking that you're going to average about seven hundred trips per day through the drive-through. Uh, based on the numbers I saw and that, and it, it looked, it added up to about seven hundred between the weekend and weekdays.
Total in a day.
Yes, total in a day.
Right, not a peak hour.
No, 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 total in a day, seven, seven hundred trips through the drive-through itself, right? And so, um, looking at, uh, DOT is basically most recent study on the intersection of one oh nine and Milton Mills with respect to, uh, average annual daily, annual average daily trips is about forty-seven hundred. So in that location alone, and right in that location, since I know seven hundred cars are going to be basically stopped, we're going to increase that forty-seven hundred by another seven hundred, which is about fifteen-ish percent or so. Uh, I don't, no, I'm sorry, I don't, but either way, seven hundred cars total, like, increased by seven hundred.
Well, it's not necessarily stopping, but moving through.
I know this, it's going to be, yeah, so there's going, basically on the day, I can probably guesstimate about an additional seven hundred cars added to that. And this, these, these are two-year-old numbers, I think. But it didn't, your, uh, the plan didn't include anything to do with the amount of traffic that would be within the gas station and convenience store itself or moving through and based on estimations of, you know, a, a project this size. So I, I would just be interested to see that basically added to the drive-through numbers.
It, it does in the study that we're, that we've done.
In the study that's, that's coming from DOT?
In the study, in, in our application to DOT, we've reassessed the Milton Mills and one oh nine intersection.
Okay.
We've, we have addressed the trip, the number of trips for the project for all uses onsite, not just the drive-through.
Okay, great, I, yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's a huge application, so.
I, I'm only concerned with that number.
Okay, yeah, that, that number will be, is included in our application to DOT. We gave you a, a summary of the high, you know, the high level points.
That was the only thing I noted, it would just, it, it excluded everything except the drive-through, so I just want to see it, uh, I want to see the drive-through plus everything else.
Yeah, it includes all uses. Uh, actually, it includes not only this project, it includes a project that will be proposed next to it and includes one up the hill from that. So it's, got our bases covered.
So you'll, you'll help us with those numbers?
Uh.
Some, maybe just some excerpts from your application to DOT so we can.
Um, I can, put in the total number of trips expected for the project and we can add that, we can revise, you know, the traffic, the, the traffic narrative we gave you, to include that number of trips.
Sounds good.
Because I think we should be paying attention to traffic, especially if we're waiting for, we're going to just approve whatever DOT says as a condition. We're not going to necessarily see it before we make the approval, I think discussing the traffic is a, is a very good idea and going over all these points is valuable use of time, so.
I got nothing else except for sidewalk stakeout improvements.
So, um.
I think we should schedule a site walk.
Are there some waivers that we've requested that you may be comfortable approving or not approving this evening?
I think we were going to do the sidewalk first.
Now. I know.
Yeah, I think we were going to do the sidewalk before we approved the waivers, wasn't it?
I mean, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to happen in that order, so that's why I'm mentioning it.
No, it doesn't happen.
It, it's, you know, we're not, as part of the sidewalk, we're not, I, I wouldn't think that we're staking out every single edge of pavement line. So some of those waivers that we're requesting, you know, as far as parking stall depth and drive aisle with, you're not going to see as part of the site walk. So that's why I was just trying to see if we could, um, I know we talked about them last time, but if we could move forward with a decision on them, that would be great. Because it would mean that we don't have to change the plans, at least in that respect, it's in no indication of approval of the application. And there's still a possibility that the site could change based on your sidewalk, um, but at least the waivers would be taken care of. Is that fair, Ben?
I, I think it's a reasonable request. One, one of the things, of the three waiver requests in, in the application packet, I would offer up that the first one is not really a waiver request. It has to do with the location of off-street parking. It's one of the good neighbor standards and it's, it basically says, in suburban rural areas, this is what the standard says.
Yeah.
Small uses may need public visibility, and it goes on, and large-scale uses that don't require visibility from the road may be located further back. And in the narrative, they're, they're essentially saying, can the board consider this a large use? I, I personally think it is, I think that's reasonable and therefore, you know, it wouldn't be a waiver, it's just reviewing this application with an eye on that larger scale standard that says, it may be located further from the road within a landscape buffer between the building and the street.
Do we have a specific definition, definition for a large scale?
No.
Yeah, no, I, I totally, I, I, yeah, no, I totally understand the reasonability of, of all this. I don't want to give any type of false impression that there may not be some type of, you know, dramatic design change that's required before this thing is all the, all the way through. Especially before I go walk it and see stuff staked out. And so that's, that's kind of where I'm at, I don't want to give a false impression in that, in that respect.
I, I think it might be, uh, why I suggested to wait for the, for everybody here for your waivers.
Yeah, I'm just proposing the question, so that's, that's fine.
Yes, yes, we can. In terms of stuff we want to see as, uh, do folks have an idea of what they want to see staked out on the sidewalk?
Setbacks, uh, the vegetated, vegetated buffer probably, just a general idea, I don't want to see, you know, a thousand stakes everywhere, just for a general idea.
No, because we're not going to watch what.
Right, right.
Yeah.
They have to do the layer eventually, so anything you want to see is applicable to have a site.
Well, they raise it, man.
Well, it is, we would raise it. They're going to have to lay it out eventually, so it's not like they have to redo it, you know what I mean? It's like, it has to be done at some point.
We would have to redo it because of all the earthwork that has to occur, the stakes get taken out. There's fill and lowering and blasting and all kinds of stuff that has to happen before pavement's laid out, so just to offer that, we'd have to be restaking it.
Yeah, stick out every parking space.
Is there anything currently staked out there now?
Uh, the building is staked out currently, um, which is, I think, a very reasonable request. Something that you would want to see on site, we could stake out the fuel, the fueling, uh, canopy, uh, so you can see that in relation. We could also stake out the order board so that you can see that in relation to the property line, potentially put a, put a sight line on the property line. And I, we can stake entrances, perfectly reasonable, I think you'll want to see where those are.
I think the building, the fuel island, um, and the, and the entrances.
Yeah, I was going to say the entrances. The only, the only other thing I just kind of want to identify so I can get kind of a, a picture also, not the only thing, but a, a thing is, and with respect to the traffic flow is, um, the point that the ninety-degree turn, uh, there in the, uh, the southwest corner there. Am I looking at the right, yeah, southwest.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, down, 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 ninety-degree turn at the, towards the, uh, drive-through, yeah, right there, like, right.
Oh, the bend in the direction.
Yeah, exactly, like, right, so I can, like, look at, all right, the entrance is there, here's the ninety-degree turn and then go into the thing.
So stake out the radius for the curve.
I don't even need the radius, I just need a stake at that ninety-degree turn.
Add it in the center?
Just, crap, there, there.
Somewhere in the vicinity.
Exactly, so I have an idea.
I'm sorry, our surveyors are very precise, so clarifying.
Yep, um, yeah, and then obviously property lines.
Uh, when you say property lines?
Your, the pro, for this property, for this project.
Okay, so you want to see where the dividing line is going to be for this project, the new property line?
Exactly, I want to see where, yeah, what the north, north, south, east, west, obviously I can see Milton Mills and one oh nine, but yeah.
Okay.
Septic tank relative to that, can you?
Probably test the hole in the ground right now.
It's probably, yeah, it's probably, it's good, something, something visible.
Fuel, where?
Adam asked for, Adam asked for a few islands to.
Where are the fuel tanks?
They're right here.
Okay, those, those are the fuel tanks, I, I just missed them.
There's a test it there too right now.
Got it. All right.
Um, just back to the twenty-five foot buffer. If at all, where's, where is the concern for, for staking it?
Uh, I wouldn't say it's a concern, I just want to get a relative view of where it's going to be from the road, I guess, you know, it's, um, I can estimate twenty-five feet myself, I guess, by eye, but, yeah, I'll retract that request.
Okay.
I think it makes sense to stake it out because if we don't want it disturbed, it's a vegetated buffer, then it should be denoted before they start digging it up.
Well.
I think that would be fine.
It's, it's, it's not a buffer that can't be disturbed, it's just a buffer that has to be there in the final condition.
Well, I think that the twenty-five vegetated foot vegetated buffer should be fairly undisturbed.
But it doesn't have to be a native buffer, it doesn't have to be existing trees, we can clear the trees and put new trees back and satisfy the standard.
I think that's something that the board goes over often with these things where you adjacent the road like that, we ask that you don't disturb the vegetation that's there when you add vegetation. Because it takes so long for the stuff to grow back and then you don't have to plant such large specimens, saves money too.
Well, the reason why we would disturb a, existing twenty-five foot buffer is for grading purposes in order to build out the rest of the site. So where it can be saved is being saved, but where it's being impeded on, that's where we're offering other plantings. So I think Ben had something to comment.
That would be a great thing to put in the vegetation note. The irrigation.
No.
So, um, one, one thing I'm, just to maybe focus the, the conversation around the, the buffer is I, I recall that we were talking about the twenty-five foot buffer in the vicinity of the infiltration of the stormwater on the Milton Mills road side. And that is where there will be some grading that gets closer to the edge of the right of way. And it, and it goes maybe within feet of the right of way, certainly within twenty-five feet. So if, if there's a place where that edge of the right of way and the twenty-five foot could be marked, I, I would guess that that's probably going to be the most valuable place to see where that edge is. Is that?
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's the only place on the site where we're impacting the twenty-five foot buffer, so I, I see what you're saying, Ben, yeah. We can stake out that general area right at the right-of-way line to show you that this portion of the twenty-five foot buffer is being impacted. However, we are placing six trees within that area to put it back into place.
You guys have an idea of when you're looking to do the sidewalk?
Probably two weeks, right?
Do you want to make some?
I would say.
Is that the third or is that, what is that?
Is that the fifth?
Is it the?
Yeah.
It's the third. I had the two, two things I'd like to see on the sidewalk that I mentioned last time, the location of the communication box for the drive-through, which is very close to his ninety-degree curve, just where that is, so I can kind of visually see what, what the line noise is to.
Can you have him label these, because we're not going to know what's.
There, there, I have to leave them, yeah.
This is going to look like a bunch of wooden stakes and flags on them at this point.
Um, and then also the aquifer protection district line, we could get some stakes on that.
Um, it's a long line. Can we go, uh, yeah.
Those are the two things I mentioned last time. Those were the two things I mentioned last time.
It's probably, I would say four stakes for that one, like up there, the, uh, yeah, that, the one closest to one at the line. Right where it intersects, closest to one oh nine there, where it makes a bend, that thirty-degree bend there, then further down where it makes the bend again, and then at the end of the property. I'd say those four stakes will give us kind of a good idea of, I don't know, that area, that line. They'll paint that picture.
So, I, what I'm hearing is in that specific corner, the boards look for a property line, twenty-five foot buffer line, and aquifer zone line.
If it's one stake, that can serve them long, you know, that's, and that's fine.
I think the property line is already there.
I think it's gonna be very confusing when we're on site.
Property line, you can see that it already have a pink flag on it, you can see.
Uh, I don't think the property line is staked at all.
Oh, really? Oh, well, we'd like to see that then. I see one there when I drive by.
Well, the edge of the right-of-way could be indicated by a.
You would think the property line would be marked.
It's marked by pins, but the entire boundary is not flagged. It's seven acres of land.
Mostly, when, when I think of sidewalks, and I, I know that you guys have done many sidewalks over the last couple of years without me. Uh, going on the sidewalk, it's, it's really enough information for you to get, to understand where you are when you're holding the plan in front of you. And I think a few key landmarks like the building corners and the order board, the property line, like those, those all make sense. I, um, wondering what it will add. Or how it will help you orient with all of those things on the ground, and I mean, there's no. I'll, I'll save that at a tour, I mean, there's, there's just nothing there except some treatment.
It's true, what we approved is on the paper, not on the ground, so if that's how you wanna do it.
And I can, you know, with those few things staked, I can give you reference points, you know, standing at the order board. We, looking this direction, we're a hundred and seventy-five feet to the property line, so verbal cues, I think, onsite during this process will be helpful. As well, I, I truly think it's gonna add confusion with all of these stakes. We only have so many types of colored flags, um, so. Yeah, I, I do think one that wasn't mentioned.
They just usually just write a simple one-word phrase on the, on the written.
Yeah, there may be parts of this site that we can't even access because of trees or structure or, or whatever might be out there. So, okay, I have a pretty comprehensive list, I think where I would push back a little bit is property line. I think I can stake the boundary where we have, where we're impeding on it. I can show you the pins on the ground where the property line is and, and give you some verbal cues.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, uh, I'm sorry, I missed a date, was that April?
April, April third?
Third. Is that a, what day of the week is that?
Third. It's right, it's gonna be before thirty.
Oh, okay, great. So five or four thirty?
I would, I would give him plenty of time, I'd say, I don't know, five or four thirty?
I would, I would say five, I don't think it's gonna take as long as forty-five minutes, is it?
Okay.
You think?
Nah, it's right down the road, that's what I'm saying.
It's gonna take them the whole two weeks to stake it out, but.
That's right.
That's right.
Okay. Uh, and who set the date of the public hearing? For the meeting, for the meeting following?
We'll probably set that up tonight. Yeah, I don't think we're gonna set that tonight.
I mean, is there? Is there a reason not to?
So, my only, no, my only question about this, and this is actually just kind of a general question, just cause I haven't, I guess, I just haven't thought about it before. The, like, we always video, right, the, the sidewalk, is the video just for record, or is it for, so the public can view it?
So, that's a tough question now, because I, I think it will go on, it won't be live, like this is, so it'll be on like the YouTube channel.
But that's what I'm saying, so the reason I ask that is, um, in order to give the public a chance to view a public record of the sidewalk. Prior to the, uh, the public hearing, you know what I mean, so they can watch the sidewalk if they, they're not present. Cause they're welcome to the sidewalk if they wanna be, but you know, if they're not there, they can.
Is, is that not, Ben, is that, or Jason, is that a requirement?
No, it's not, he's just, he, it's not a requirement whatsoever.
Absolutely, no, it's not. It's not a requirement.
No, no, I just mean, isn't notification of the sidewalk, public attendance a requirement?
Notification. Uh, notification of sidewalk is not a requirement, I have to post it in the town hall, notification of a public hearing is a requirement.
Okay.
Um, which I believe is only seven, we moved it to seven days.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
I can make the requirement even if they wanted to do it after the sidewalk, but, um, it's really. Discussion between you and the board on this one, um, I'm fine with it either way.
I, I think. I think it would be beneficial to follow up the public hearing right after the sidewalk walk on the same night, because if any members of the public have attended the sidewalk. Then they could also attend a discussion afterward, you know, the back and forth with the board and have an opportunity to weigh in on that evening.
I think it would be helpful to have a meeting to review the changes to the documents. Before we have the hearing, because the hearing is on the document, and if we're unfamiliar with the document at the hearing, that's kinda. I think it would be nice to review it for one meeting before.
Yeah, I'm basically, I'm, I'm basically, just because of the size and scope of the project, I'm leaning towards give, basically, kinda leaning, gi- given the, doing the public solid. Kinda thing, and giving them an ample opportunity to kinda review, uh, the processes and prior to, so that they can bring, bring and have a more productive. Um, uh, public hearing, uh, for those that choose to participate.
Yeah, I think we're moving at an adequate pace to get this project rolling, no problem, so.
Um, okay, so would it be possible to set the public hearing date for the meeting after?
Yeah, uh, I don't wanna say that without everybody else here, but yeah, I mean, I think that's reasonable.
Seventeenth, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Um, and for, we don't need a whole news plan set, but just an updated, what, just the. What do we update, what did you wanna update, Gavin?
What were you? Well, I can confer with Dave, hopefully he was kinda stuck with me on some of these things, but, um, I can go back through it if you'd like.
No.
I have a list of what's actually changing.
So I had a project overview, hours of operation, but you said a project overview was in the cover letter.
It is, but we did not note, uh, hours of operation, I can respond to that formally.
So, I mean, it was kind of a back and forth about some things, but nothing set completely.
So we have the plan changes that will occur based on the conversation we had regarding Ben's comments that need to change. So removal of the two parking spaces, adding curb along the pedestrian pathway, that part of the pathway being paved, signage at the entrance to the trailhead. Um, and then addition, the addition of showing the twenty-five foot vegetated buffers for the site. That's what I have on my list without reviewing my notes.
Proven something on those.
We have the.
Traffic numbers from here into.
As far as the application goes, yep, we need to update the traffic narrative to include trip generation for the entire project. And then, um, you just mentioned the last one, now I'm blanking on what that was, oh, the hours of operation.
Uh, trashcan, trashcans on the plan.
Trash cans on the plan, that's on the notes, yeah.
The twenty-five foot vegetated buffer noted on Milton Mills Road, like a dash line wherever you wanna denote it on the plan.
Yeah, got that one.
And vegetation notes, notes, kinda like underneath the landscaping notes, notes about vegetation. Just saying that there are gonna be the twenty-five foot buffers on the sides, the sixty-foot buffer's gonna be maintained in the back, vegetation notes will be added to the.
I think I'll include, um, they, I think send to get lost on that notes and legends sheet, um, so I think to make it really obvious, I, I would actually put the note on our site plan. Which will be signed and, and recorded, um, that no further clearing beyond the proposed tree line that's shown on this plan, uh, will occur, can occur. We'll, we'll work to know that.
Yep.
Yeah, I was looking for a note.
I, I was just gonna say, like, these are the kinds of things that I, I would expect to be submitted, uh, for the public hearing. I, I, I'm not sure that I, that, I think what we've got in front of us, based, and with the discussion tonight, is probably adequate for the next meeting if it's gonna be. More of like a discussion of the sidewalk and the waiver requests. And then making sure that before the public hearing, and, and for the public hearing, that the plans are. As close to one hundred percent bundled up and all the notes and submissions are.
Which gives us three weeks to modify the plans and get them to you, so that you get, the board would get them a week in advance of the public hearing. Whereas if we were to do that before the sidewalk, we'd only have one week to turn them around so that you get them, get them a week in advance.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, like, I don't feel, I don't feel like I need to see this put sidewalk. So, yeah, no, before the public hearing.
Yep, okay, we'll plan on that. That's it, thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Did you do it?
I'll second, I'll make a second on the, uh, motion for the sidewalk, for April third at five P M.
Did you make an initial motion?
You did. You did? I don't, I didn't hear anyone make any motions.
Well, I'll just make, start over, make a motion, I don't, I wasn't.
I'll make a motion that we have the sidewalk for the Fairgrounds Variety, uh, map two forty-one, lot zero zero six. On April third at five P M.
Second. All in favor?
Can we go ahead and do the public hearing too, so I can get notifications out early?
Um, I'll make a motion that we hold the public hearing for the Fairgrounds Variety application, um, on.
Seventeenth.
April seventeenth at six P M.
Thank.
All in favor?
Thank you. See you on the third.
Alright, goodnight. Thank you, guys. Uh, before we adjourn too, I just have a quick scenario to run by you guys. As, as, I only have, right now I have, um. Two board members that were present, so a little over a year ago, we had, uh, the herd storage facility. Uh, he was unaware of the site plan review, gives you a one-year, um, starting period. He was unaware of the one-year, he called, he contacted my office, um, a couple of weeks ago. And he, he said he was in the process of getting the building plans, he wanted to know what he, what he needed. Uh, I reviewed, then I went back and reviewed, cause I was like, ah, anyway, so I reviewed and found out that it was, he had lapsed his one year. He's at fourteen, he's four months old. Uh, I called, I followed that up with a discussion, I let him know, he was actually pretty bummed about it, used that lit, term loosely. Uh, but, so I called Ben to ask how we, how the board could proceed to that. Uh, where nothing has changed, and I might let Ben swap over on this one, but where nothing has changed in the ordinance according to, um, storage units. Ben feels that this, no two weeks, we can amend the, the original conditions, because there is no change to our ordinance, so nothing would have changed for the plan. Or we can have him come in for a site plan review again, and kinda do a fast track, you know? With the full board here, the only two members who hadn't seen it was, it was you two.
Hey, I just saw it.
Oh, you did see.
I did see that.
Oh, yeah, um, well, that's good, paying attention, nice job. Uh, so it's, uh, Ben can kind of explain it up, cause we had a, a pretty good discussion over this on how you guys wanna do it, because our audit sets, you know, um. Go ahead now.
Yeah, I, I, I think, there's, there's no question that the board needs to review this plan, that the plan's expired. And if he's gonna do this on the project, the board needs to re, re-review it and re-approve it. So procedurally, I think that, that can be done easiest where we basically review this as an amended plan procedurally. So that they submit everything that they submitted last year. And the board reviews it, verifies it, and can vote on it that evening in one meeting. The other option that Jason had outlined is to handle this basically as a brand-new application, where it comes as a pre-application plan. Where, again, typically the applicant introduces the project, gives the board a sense of what this is, and the board can say, well, these are gonna be the issues. And then at the next meeting, it's an official application that the board could vote on, so that would be like a two-meeting process. I, I think from a practical standpoint, um, getting the information and reviewing it, uh, as an amended plan in one meeting. Procedurally would work, um, but I think the question in front of the board is. Would, would that two-meeting process for the typical brand-new application that the board's never seen before. Uh, be either the way the board wants to approach this, or would that amendment approach be acceptable?
I was, again, I was saying is to see if the board can just grant an extension on his application.
Where it's already lapsed.
I was just gonna read what, what the ordinance said. Just says, uh, limitation of approval, substantial construction of the improvements covered by any site plan approval must be commenced within twelve months, so. So we're saying he hasn't substantially started, he's already dumped the site up, but that's not substantial enough, is what we're saying, okay?
Right.
And it says, um, if construction has not been substantially commenced and substantially competed with, completed within the spec- specified period or within time period agreed by the board and the applicant, the approval shall be null and void. The applicant may request an extension of the approved deadline prior to the expiration.
Yeah, that's why we're at, we're at right now, because it's already expired.
We're just going through what it says. Such a request must be made in writing, must be made to the planning board, okay? I would, yeah, I guess he, he'll have to come in, and I'd say we would just. Do you remember if there was a lot of issues with that application, or?
There was no comments and there was nobody here for the public hearing, maybe one person, it was the lighting. Um, and there, you know, the board had some lengthy discussion about vegetation and, and stuff like that, and.
The setback from wetland.
And what they were doing, but they were, they met everything the board was asking.
Yeah.
And that's kinda why I'm saying, you know.
And it was no development plan barring this, so. Yeah, I don't think we would change anything. No, no, I, I think if we just did the one meeting amended, I think we'd.
I would agree, I, I would agree.
I know, um, I know he would appreciate, he actually came, cause he wanted to know how to proceed with this, that's Mr. O'Keefe right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, me.
Yeah. Oh, I know, that's.
I couldn't, I, I, we just had this discussion just the other day, so, you know, I gotta, anyway.
We couldn't get him on.
I had to get some, some stuff for you guys, some paperwork, so, he's gonna come into the next meeting and we'll, we'll deal with it then.
So in terms of amended, are we just amending dates, is that what we're talking about, just in terms of like start date, just amending the start date? Same, same project, same everything, same materials, all that kinda stuff?
Presuming it's, it's an identical submission.
If it's an identical submission and nothing's changing except for the date?
No, correct.
Great.
I have the original documents, signed, planned and everything downstairs, um. I don't, wasn't planning on having him provide everybody a new plan sets, because they're not cheap to, to do. Um, we, he has a copy, I have a copy, I was here bringing, so you guys could at least kinda give it a quick review.
I was gonna say, does a new copy need to be signed, right, by us?
That was a question I actually meant to ask Ben on the phone, I didn't.
If we're gonna go this route.
And I wanted to know how it gets recorded, cause you have one plan set recorded, does it, just, how does that work, does it plan set two, or?
I, I would, I would expect a, a plan with a signature block that the board would sign.
I have a blank plan, so.
Okay, I would say, yeah, whenever, like, whenever we get this on the agenda, have the blank one with the dates corrected. Barring any serious heart failure, I think that can be pretty banged up pretty quick.
Well, that's all I have for you guys, I just wanted to know how you wanted to proceed with that.
Okay. Short, sweet, that's what I like.
Yeah, I like those.
That's it. Make a motion we adjourn, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?